Good afternoon, everyone. The Public Defender Service Corporation of March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two is now called to order. While the secretary, please call the roll.
Chief Justice F. Philip Carbelito.
I am present and I'm logged on from my residence at Nimitzville.
Presiding Judge Alberto Silamor III.
I am present and I'm at the Guam Judicial Center.
Trustee Cynthia V. Ekubi.
Good afternoon, your honors and all. I am present and here in my office located in Hagatya.
Trustee Donna Munia Kanata.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here and I'm present in my office at East Agania, Guam Auto Spa.
Guam Bar President Jackie T. Tralatti.
Alpha Day present here in Agania in my office in Agania.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I hereby confirm that all members of the corporation are present and verify that we have a quorum to conduct the regular business of the corporation this afternoon. And notice that, do notice of the meeting have been provided in our packet. And we are ready to start the business at hand. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there a motion to adopt subject to corrections?
I moved to adopt, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I moved to adopt subject correction.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Presiding Judge Lamarena to adopt the minutes. It's been seconded by trustee Kanata. Any comments, discussion on the minutes? There being none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, it's been unanimously adopted. And the first item of the agenda under all business is our financial status update and I will recognize Mr. Mike Moreno, the Controller of the Public Defender Service Corporation. Mr. Moreno.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, can anybody hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Mike.
Thank you.
Hear you.
Thank you. For Public Defender Service Corporation and the alternate public defender, since last meeting, DOA has caught up with all the allotments up till today. We just received the second allotment release for March on the seventeenth. And we are anticipating receiving the first release for April within the first week of April. As of today, the Public Defender Service Corporation is at ninety-three percent. And the alternate public defender is at ninety-two percent. For the domestic violence program, we do have several funding sources that I'll be reporting. As of today, we have funding available from STOP two thousand and twenty, which we are presently invoicing all services except sexual assaults. For STOP two thousand and eighteen sexual assault, additional funding is provided for use for an off-island conference in April for participants. We have also received additional funding for STOP two thousand and nineteen, which was transferred to PDSC from another agency. The original funding for STOP two thousand and nineteen was exhausted in two thousand and twenty-one. Reimbursements of payments made in advance for these programs are received regularly within thirty days after submitting our invoice. The second funding source we have is the ICJR, which we are not presently invoicing until the STOP programs have been exhausted by June of two thousand and twenty-two. For the EJC, receivables as of today are for the month of October, two thousand and twenty-one through February, two thousand and twenty-two, for a total of sixty-one thousand. We will continue to follow up on the release of payments with DSC. And that is all for the report for the finances.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Moreno? There being none, we'll just go ahead and move on to the next item. And that's the report from Mr. Steve Hattori, the Executive Director of our corporation. And Mr. Hattori, you are recognized.
Good afternoon, Chairman and the board members. We really don't have much to report. We had active shooter training just last week. I thought that went really well, it was long overdue, but at least we were able to get a retired police officer, Sergeant Ogun, to provide that training to both offices. And it was, it was pretty intense. They actually used like, you know, firearm as well as blank bullets. So it was kind of intense, but I'm glad we got that done. But other than that, I mean, we're still looking to hire people. We hired one attorney. She's supposed to be starting next week. And so, and then I think we'll still be short a couple more. I mean, it's getting pretty hard finding lawyers on Guam. I'm pretty sure the Guam Bar President could relate to that. So, but we're still looking. We have a couple interns who passed the Guam, passed graduate from law school and we're hoping to pick them up by the fall. But other than that, we don't really have anything else to report at this time.
Well, I think, Steve, you should make it a matter of course that in the past you have provided a written report with case performance results. And just the, the ongoing performance of the lawyers and the corporations as a whole. I think you should continue to do that on a monthly basis. And same with the APD. And that way, the members, the board, if they have any questions, we want to be kept abreast in reference to the performance of the corporation.
Okay, I guess Chief Justice would do that. We've been doing them quarterly, but we can do that monthly. Those are rather easy reports to generate. So we'll provide that at the next board meeting.
Right. Any, any questions for Mr. Hattori? All right, so Ms. Gail, our managing attorney for the APD.
Good afternoon, Your Honor. I don't have much to report either. We're still just looking for attorneys as well. We did have the active shooter training, which was very, very good training. We've actually had a couple of minor incidences at the office where we have clients who get annoyed with certain things and we've had to, you know, calm them down, but nothing as serious as having active shooter training. So it was really a a good way to get the office to be involved in something that is important for all, everybody's safety. So that was really good. Could I ask, Your Honor, did you, I couldn't quite hear what you said. You wanted us to write a monthly report on our office activities? Is that what you want?
Yes, unless there's an objection to providing the monthly report.
No, 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 that's fine. I was just, I couldn't hear you. I apologize.
Yeah.
That's fine. Okay, well, do it for the next board meeting. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Any questions for our managing attorney from any of the corporation members or trustees? All right, there being none, we'll move on to the Elder Justice Center. And Mr. Ron Haynes, you are recognized.
Good afternoon, and I will say that the EJC also participated in the active shooter. Sadly, I did not do well hiding and would have been a victim. But moving on from that, the, the report I included kind of speaks for itself. I, I should say that these are February numbers. We had talked at our last board meeting about numbers we were trying to get and and that's from February fifteenth. So this is all of February, though. We did close forty-two cases, do eight home visits, a hospital visit, and those are cases as well. And you could see the services rendered there. We've made at least two hundred and fifty contact calls last month. And you could see the list of outreach we participated in and what we are participating in in March. And we're continuing to reach out, including when the senior centers open again, we are asking that we be able to address the seniors there in the center. We did some changes on our website as well. If you would look on that, you'll see that we added some tutorials. We condensed the legal intake from six documents down to one. So, you know, we've been making progress. This month, we are nearing the forty mark now. And beginning in April, we're going to go back again on the wait, waitlist for those who have not contacted us and returned calls or returned information and reach out for a third contact. And at that contact, we will leave it in, in their hands. Basically, if they don't return a call from then, we're going to send a letter suggesting that if they want to keep going forward, that they would supply information. Or in the other hand, we're going to close the case for the time being. So that way, it just doesn't clog up the list and we can, we can continue to move on. So that's basically our report for the month of February.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. And first of all, I would like to keep the Elder Justice Center as a a topic for our regular board meetings. And so we want to make that the report as part of the regular monthly agenda, similar to our report from the Executive Director and our managing attorney. Secondly, myself personally, I appreciate, I see the activity that is going on with the Elder Justice Center. But just a couple of things, just in reference to what had been the point of interest in the past. I don't, I don't think I'm gleaning this from the report. And there were two items. Number one, Ron is the backlog. I don't see what is the status. And so I think we should make that part of the regular report. You know, how are we chipping away in reference to the backlog? And then I think I had raised at one point, it would be helpful in reference to information, because there, there's been complaints that, you know, it's taken years to get service. So from the time of point of contact, someone walks in to the Elder Justice Center until disposition, we can start collecting data and reporting just, you know, that interval time period for to see in reference to whether or not, you know, these complaints are valid and how is it that we, what can we do to address those concerns? So I, you know, encourage you to continue with all these other activities. It shows much excitement and interest in reference to the, the specific clientele group that we are servicing. And we want, I myself would like to, you know, see that that continues. So, so just with those two comments in reference to adding those two statistics information, that would be very helpful to me.
I, I would like to say that as far as chipping away at the backlog, in preparation for this board meeting, I had asked and everyone has been contacted who has contacted us up until February twenty-third. So we're just three, four weeks behind now and, and making good progress as far as that goes. And I will look into that interval time period. I would agree with you that there, there has been a substantial amount of time for, for many, and we are really working hard at cutting that down. It will take some time, but we're moving in that right direction.
All right. All right, any questions for, for Mr. Haynes from any members of the board? If there are none, we'll go to the next item under new business. And that's life estates deeds. And I understand that Mr. Flores is on our virtual screen. And let's, if we can pull up the letter and then recognize Mr. Flores or anyone else. Steve, do you want to address this initially?
Maybe Ron Haynes could address that. I know that as, you know, as we, they've been doing such a great job within a way with the, like, we call them low-hanging fruits, the the easy legal documents. And so I think they're going to be at a point where they're going to be able to expand their services. And I think that Mr. Haynes wants to address that.
Okay, I apologize. Ron, you're recognized on this topic. And then I will recognize Mr. Flores.
Thank you. I will say that deeds of gift reserving a life estate is a really good plan in good estate planning. Many of the clients that do come here, we do a will for them. And I recommend to them at times, I did one this morning, as a matter of fact, that I recommended they go ahead and contact a title attorney to look into getting a deed of gift reserving a life estate. It would just work out better for them. That said, it does take more time. And, and it takes more preparation on part of the seniors as well. They, they have to come to us with a deed. So they have to get that deed first. And sometimes that will slow the process down. You know, so that I could see how the deed is held and if it would be good for them. There's a lot, lot into it. It's not just a matter of, of the drafting a deed, but there's also tax consequences. There's Medicaid consequences. There, there's, there's other things going on. So it does take time to assess if it's the best route to go. However, if we're doing good estate planning, I do think it should be part of the EJC. Or maybe in the future, or, you know, of course, that would be up to the board to decide.
I'll recognize Attorney Ekubi because she had raised some concerns originally on this and in reference to generally just preparation of deeds. But I'd like to give Mr. Flores an opportunity to address the board, QB, before I recognize you. And Mr. Flores, if you can turn on your video and unmute yourself, then I will recognize you to speak before the board in reference to your request.
Your Honor, I actually had spoken to Mr. Flores a couple of months ago when he first sent the letter. And I know that he mentioned to me, he didn't really want to say anything at the board and that we just, if we just gave the letter to the board for their consideration, I don't know if he's going to make a comment. He hasn't chatted in, so I just know that he didn't. I feel like he was a bit shy and he believes that his letter will serve its purpose.
All right, I just wanted to give him that opportunity and courtesy if he wished to to the board, but I certainly understand. And so the matter is now before the board. Attorney Ekubi, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Justice and Mr. Presiding Judge and members, board members and PDSC. Your Honor, I think that Mr. Haynes makes an excellent point. Inasmuch as I want to help as many of the elderly as I would like to, and I think that the judges and justices are aware of either myself or Ms. Tralatti and many of our attorneys that not only help the Manomko, but some of us do a lot of pro bono work. And, and I think Mr. Haynes raises a really good point, Your Honors and board members. I am reluctant, inasmuch as I would like to help Mr. Flores, I'm really reluctant that this organization may want to consider expanding these type of services. Because as Mr. Haynes pointed out, when he, they consulted with a individual this morning and recommended they contact a title lawyer and work with a title company, that's exactly it. Part of my practice, and I'm not sure if the, our president does the same, but a large part of my practice is real estate development, I mean, real estate transactions, some minimal succession planning, estate planning, and, and acquisition of property, real property. And just in my own practice, I have seen errors that have been committed. And I, as Mr. Haynes pointed out, this is a really involved practice. It not only involves the elderly person coming in and providing legal description, but it involves working with a title company to get updated title reports or OERs. That's going to be a cost, because that's something that's going to have to be either assumed by the elderly party, or if the, or if the Elderly Justice Center assumes that, that's anywhere between a hundred to two hundred dollars. On top of that, you know, there are issues that come up with doing deeds, whether or not there's any liens, encumbrances, clouds on title. So you really have to work with the title company on this, Your Honors and board members. The second thing too is, as Mr. Haynes pointed out, the consequences. There are going to be possibly tax consequences, possibly any capital gain consequences. All these other issues that can come into play with regards to just preparing it. It's a very involved process. It's not just a matter of preparing a deed and then giving it to the elderly individual and recording it, and then the recording fees. The other thing too is that I find that in these type of cases where I've actually represented elderly individuals, a large part of my practice is to ascertain whether the elderly person truly understands what he or she or they are going to do. And oftentimes, it becomes an issue of competence, where we really have to be very careful. I've had situations where people come to me and, and tell me, look, this is what happened with one attorney. And, and then later on to find out, I didn't know that that is what I was planning to do because I wanted to refinance the property. Because we need to make improvements. There needs to be repairs. Real property taxes have gone up. I can't afford this now. I need to get an equity line of credit. Lastly, my other concern, Your Honors and members, is the fact that if we, if the Elderly Justice System, Elderly Justice Center gets involved, my concern is the potential of liability on the part of the organization. I've had, again, situations, both sitting as a member of the Ethics Committee and also working with title companies that have retained my services or have had parties retain my services because they've discovered, as they're going through escrow, there was a cloud on the title. The names of the individuals spelled incorrectly. The lot description was wrong. The individual is gone. So we have to either go back and try to see as best as what we could do to do it administratively and, and/or we're coming before the court on a, on a complaint for quiet title. So I just see that there is a lot involved and it would probably clog, you know, continue to increase the backlog of services that the Elderly Justice Center is already providing. And I'm just concerned too that it may open up some future liability to the Elderly Justice System, the Public Defender's Office. And many of these attorneys there are just not really equipped to handle a lot of real property transactional work. And so those are my concerns. And that was the reason why, when we initially thought about what we could do to offer these services for our Manomko, is to really limit it by just doing the powers of attorney, simple wills, those kinds of type of work that we know that that could be very helpful to them, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be so involved. And so, Mr. Chief Justice, that's, that's my concern of all. No disrespect to Mr. Flores, inasmuch as I think that there are many of them out there that need help. I just think that this would be a great burden on the Elderly Justice System to expand its services to include that, and also the liability. So those are my potential thoughts as far as expanding it. Right now, we're, we're working on just trying to get to all those who need the help and clear the backlog on just the basic stuff, powers of attorney, legal guidance, simple wills. And I think we just really need to focus on that first and foremost. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I recognize Mr. Haynes, if there's any response that he would like to make. Is President Jackie, do you have any comments that you want to add? Yes.
Yeah, all I'd like to add is that the experience of Attorney Ekubi is the same. I think for any attorney on this island who does real estate transactions were extremely careful with costs and with preparing these types of deeds because of the fact that we can create a liability for the person who is recording the deed. So for example, let's say the elderly asks the Elder Justice System to prepare the deed with a life reservation. And we're not deploying the same process that a private attorney would take with obtaining a PTR on the property to ensure that the elderly person owns the property or that there has been no other encumbrance. Well, we could potentially be creating a separate cloud of title that would make that person liable. And so there are many steps, I agree with Attorney Ekubi, that I think that we take in real estate transactions that perhaps the Elder Justice Center does not have the funding available for it or the personnel available for it to dedicate the time and effort to this particular line of work. So I too would have some reservations at this time. I also, on behalf of the Guam Bar Association, you know, would be concerned as well about the growing of the Elder Justice Center in the context of the type of transactions. Real estate transactions is a huge market for our attorneys who practice on the island. And so I would like to ask the Bar Association about their thoughts about the growth of the Elder Justice System in terms of expanding the reach of the Elder Justice System. I too want to say, Chief Justice, that I am completely in support of helping our elderly. We provide consistent services to our Manomko as Attorney Ekubi indicated. I think that the two of us are at least a part of a number of firms who provide significant pro bono services to our Manomko on an annual basis and continue to do so despite the difficulties that we see in our economy. And, you know, and I would ask, you know, and Mr. Haynes to consider maybe focusing our attention rather than on expanding the deeds to look at also the new development of the war claims, the survivors' claims. We do have that that's being passed by the legislature that's going to need additional services, which require our survivors to fill out affidavits and forms with notarization required. And that's another area that the Elder Justice Center could also assist rather than expanding it into an area which is going to be at a significant cost that we have not appropriately analyzed yet. Thank you, Chief Justice, for the time.
Thank you, Jackie. Ron, first of all, any other board members? Ron, do you have any, I'm sorry.
I have a question, sir. Sorry, I'm trying to.
Yes.
Can, can you hear me?
I can, we can hear and see you, yes.
Maybe, maybe my first question is, have we ever done any of this work before? For our Manomkos? In the past, prior, can anybody answer that?
Steve, you have your end.
Prior to the imposition of the moratorium, our office, yeah, we did do deeds, whether they were deeds of gift or deeds of warranty deeds or deeds of gift reserving life estate. I know that we did receive some assistance from land management in terms of recording it. I don't think, I thought we were filing them for free because of there's a provision in law that allows us those fees to be waived if they're, you know, if they're indigent and they're clients of ours. But we really haven't done that since ninety-eight, I think. Was it ninety, or no, two thousand and three, maybe. But I could run a report on that, how many deeds we've done in the past. But there would be learning curve.
Steve, sir, may I ask, when you were doing it back then, was it something that you guys felt was overwhelming? For the, for the survey, I mean, for public defender? Did you guys think that was, did we have to have a couple of attorneys just for that?
So back then, I would say, I mean, that ultimately, that's why the moratorium was imposed because as a whole, all of the civil stuff ended up being a little overwhelming. But But I mean, I know we did those things. We had an investigator that specialized in researching. You know, land titles and stuff like that. So. I mean, but you know, the standard of practice, I think, might have probably changed since then. And so, you know, I'd have to agree with Mr. QB and Mr. Lai that. You know, it was totally different back then. It was like, I don't think they required. Title searches to the extent where you need a report from a title company. And so those are obviously costs we didn't have to bear back then. So. You know, it's it sounds like it's definitely. Requires more diligence, you know, the standard of care has just gone up tremendously.
So the Public Defender Services Court does not have any attorneys that are like into this process or are aware of handled any of this. Is this they're saying or implying or it's too hard or?
Yeah, well, not currently. I mean, I don't know if they could, you know, the it would really be restricted to EJC, and I don't know if. Mr. Haines has had some experience in that, but definitely there would have to be some training involved by those, the attorneys that are. Involved with the Elder Justice Center.
Um. Man, I I believe, sir, we might be cutting ourselves short because I just think that manumcos deserve this kind of service and. I mean. We're here to provide service, not just for. The select few. We want to. Provide for everybody. And I'm just having a hard time trying to figure out that we used to do it before. I mean, I can understand why. You know, they put some restrictions, but now. I mean, it's. There's so much easier now to get information than it was back then. So I don't think it would be that hard. I mean. And yes, I know I'm not the attorney, but I know that when I'm asked to. Do something, I know I won't stop till I get it done. But. Our manumcos deserve. You know, at least somebody looking out for them and. And I think this is, there's a lot more manumcos who need this service. And I'm sort of with Mr. Flores, like. Why can't we help them? I mean, if we can't help them, we could say no to it, but. I think we can help them. I'm I'm pleased Cynthia and Jackie, I I understand where you guys are coming from, I, you know. But I still think if it's something that we haven't looked in the past, like. How many years, Steve? I think that we could do it.
Yeah, and you know. As a policy matter, it might be a good thing just to consider the fact that it will make property transferable. Right now, we're, you know, for property to be transferred right now, it has to be probated. If there aren't any of these deeds, right? And so. You know, we'll see if all these wills that we're preparing, if they're actually being probated, because there's a lot of property that are owned by the grandchildren, the grandchildren residing it. Nobody's done probate for their grandparents' estate or their parents' estate. Power and water is still under their deceased grandparents' name. So. You know, I mean, deeds of gift reserving life estate would. You know, I can see why. You know, EJC might want to do it just to help the family, right? Transfer property. And but it would also help the economy because it would make property more alienable and more transferable. But as right now, I don't know if we really have that expertise. Hopefully, you know, as we're reducing the waitlist. We are going to reach a point where we will need more clients and that time might be in the next few months. At the rate they're going. Because ideally will help between. I don't know what 50 to 60 seniors a month, but once we're done with the waitlist, and I think they're. Rapidly approaching the end of the waitlist, then we'll really be needing to look for. More services that we can provide our seniors and maybe Ron might disagree with me, but I think. They're they're working so quickly that they might not really have a waitlist in a few months. So it's just something to think about down the road.
So Donna, if you're done with your comments.
I guess I'm waiting now to hear what Ron has to say because. I really think we could, we should be able to make ourselves. Or prepare ourselves to help our manumco out. And I think. I want to hear what Ron has to say, sir.
Thank you, Ron. You're recognized.
Thank you. I will say, first of all, let me address the waitlist and those worries. You know, just a few minutes ago, I said we were caught up to February 23rd, and then one of my staff just now told me we literally have 14 people left. To make a second contact to. That's it. So those are people that came in through March now. And I know that seems, I mean, that seems surprising to me and and I haven't. Been where you are, where you're hearing for such a long time that we're so far behind. We have.
Let me just say on the waitlist because I want to see it in writing, you know, when. We get that we have 600, 700. And then you're showing that, you know, you're servicing 60 people. The numbers don't coincide, and I don't know what you're talking about in terms of what you define waitlist now. So I'll wait until the next written report. And look at the data and your terminate your terms as to. What constitutes a waitlist, whether it's just calling someone on the phone. And then you take them off the waitlist. But let's reserve on that, and I'll give you the opportunity. To provide in the report next month in reference to. How the waitlist has gone away. And 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 what is the disposition in those cases?
Okay, so as far as the deed of gift goes, I will tell you it is a large need. As Mr. Hattori pointed out that there we see deeds where they've just never gone to probate. And those are going to cause big problems when they finally do. And and the other folks that we can help with a deed of gift. It is a service that is very needed. I talk about. That with with clients every week. I mean, I'm always talking to them about the possibility of a deed of gift because what they ask me. And most of them say, I don't want them to have to go through probate. Well, that eliminates that problem, but as we've mentioned, it does. Bring in other consequences that they have to be advised about. It does lengthen the process. No question. And and you know, the the folks that I'm looking at right here, though. Would be good resources to help make sure we're doing it right the first time. You know, that that we could call on some folks here and say. Can you mentor us just for a time or two and make sure we're not going to drop the ball in any place? That would be helpful to the EJC and even more than taking a client. Teaching us. So that. You know, all those. All those checkmarks are there of what needs to be done, and then we can reach. A larger group of people. But. Whether it's it's time for it to happen this month or next month or down the road, I do think it is a valuable service. To to provide. But the timing of it. May not be right for for immediate. Though I think it should be revisited next month as as well as the War Powers Act and. And and those things that need to be taken care of there as well.
All right. Any other comments from any of the other board members? Does anyone make want to make any move?
Sir, I have a. I have a question, please.
Yes. Yes, Donna.
Would it be possible for us to table this next meeting? Until we can get a little bit more information on this? And maybe, you know, we can ask Mr. Flores in detail what he's actually looking for. I mean, is it to the degree that the attorneys are saying it is, or is it as simple as just? Doing a few paperwork and and for it to get it signed. I just believe that there's a lot of manumcos out there. Who don't know where to go and and, you know, and we don't advertise this stuff. So. I mean, I know that. If if we help a manumco or a few manumcos, I'm sure that. The the service that the EJC can provide for these manumcos. Because that's what our objective is, is to to provide services for our manumco. Can we just table this until next month until we can figure out? Where we actually really want to go with this, and maybe I can get with Ron and we can talk about how. There might be a way to help him manumcos. I mean, I'm sure we can't handle everything. And I'm sure that's not what we want to do, but we want to at least give Mr. Forrest's concerns a shot and. I think we should table this until next month. I'm hoping we can. I mean, I may. Change my mind next month. I just need to get more information on this, sir.
I don't have any objection to tabling this and. And if there are no objection by any board members. I'd just like to state that, number one, I've given Mr. Flores an opportunity to address the board. And so and he can and he will always continue to have that opportunity. Number two, before I personally support an expansion of the Elder Justice Center. I want to be satisfied that we are capable of addressing our current demands right now. And what is the status of our backlog? How are we performing in reference to our time period of accomplishing these services? From the time that someone walks into the time of disposition, what's the data that that currently exists? And number three, as the lawyers point out, the risk involved in. Repairing. So how is are we going to address? In order to not subject the corporation. To liability in reference to shortcomings that may arise out of performing. These services. I I've been a lawyer and. There are ways that you can wrap around and address various concerns, but. There's nothing in writing. There's 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 no. You know, standard operating procedure. There's. And so we need to be a little more organized before, in my mind, Donna. That I join in the effort to expand our services. And I think we have a responsibility to Mr. Flores and. Clients like him that this. There's an assurance that we are qualified, that the lawyers in our. Corporation are qualified to provide this service. So is there any objection to table this item? Until the next board meeting where some of the concerns. That have been articulated are addressed.
No, no objections, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Resigning judge?
No objections.
Okay, all right. Then I assume Jackie, you don't have any objection.
No objection.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Donna, so we'll we'll table this until the next board meeting and try and address some of these concerns. I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Kathy, I don't have the agenda in front of me. I didn't. Any items under public discussion? No one out in our our waiting room? And. Our next meeting date is Tuesday, April 26th at 12:30. And this time I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Oh, go ahead, and I'll second it.
It's been moved by Trustee Kenata and seconded by Trustee Ekuli. There being no objection, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everybody, and we'll see you all at the next meeting. Be safe.
Thank you, Your Honors and Members.